We will now call the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council of Tuesday, April 6, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Potem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move forward with the rest of our agenda, I will hand the mic over to our city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I need to ask the city council to add a closed-session item to our agenda tonight, which will be heard at the end of the meeting, if you add it, after all of the items and after the council comments at the end. This is because a significant exposure to litigation came about yesterday after the agenda was posted, and immediate action of the city council or a decision by the city council is needed on this item. So this does require a four, at least four council member votes to add this item to the end of the agenda tonight. It would be a significant exposure to litigation under Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2 in one case, and I do recommend that you add this tonight, council. So that would require a motion and a vote.
Councilmember Cordova.
Motion to add the additional closed-session item to the end of the meeting, as instructed by the attorney.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, and
Mayor and council.
We will be adding that to the very end right before adjournment, just for the public's notification. All right, back to our agenda. What we have is a proclamation for the Electric Line Worker Appreciation Day, and so as to reduce the need to clean up different things, I'll go ahead and read it from here, and then I'll invite CJ Berry to come forward and accept it at the podium. Electric Line Worker Appreciation Day. Whereas since 2013, Congress has recognized linemen, the profession of linemen, the contributions these brave men and women make to protect public safety, and expressing support for designating a National Lineman Appreciation Day. And whereas the city of Lompoc joins other communities across the nation in recognizing and celebrating the profession of electric line worker and other job classifications with line worker certification, and therefore we honor our electric division personnel for exemplary service to the city. And whereas this professional demand, passion, dedication, and ongoing training and require line workers to be available to work 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to construct, repair, and maintain infrastructure to keep the electricity flowing. And whereas line workers are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to repair broken and damaged electrical lines under hazardous conditions in order to make the area safe for other public safety heroes. And whereas line workers play a vital role in the lives of our citizens by maintaining and growing our electrical infrastructure, and they put their lives on the line every day by working with the many dangers of high voltage. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim April 6, 2021, as Electric Line Worker Appreciation Day, and call upon all citizens and businesses to acknowledge and thank the line workers you see for their selfless and dangerous work they perform every day to keep power on and the public safe. Thank you so very much.
Mayor and council members, thank you so much for this proclamation. It's really been a long time in the making. The electric line workers really are the unsung heroes and the backbone of the electric utility. The work they perform is amazing, and they do so with a tremendous amount of pride and an enormous amount of humility. So really, from the bottom of my heart, I respect everything that they contribute to the industry, and I'm very honored to accept this on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ann McCarty here yet? There you are, madam. You snuck in. I know you would like to speak to the Child Abuse Awareness Month. You're more than welcome to, since I already read the proclamation, if you'd like to. Okay. That's fine. If you want to delay till then, no problem. All right. City manager report, please.
All right. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and council. I only have two items tonight. One is, well, both of them are good. So this week is National Library Week, and today, Tuesday, is the National Library Workers' Day. And during this past year, this is during the pandemic, remind you, the library has continued to get books and other materials out into the community through our Holds Pickup Program and through our digital collections. Over 100,000 books, movies, and music have been read, watched, or listened to in the past 12 months, which is pretty spectacular for everything going on with COVID, including 42,000 physical items having been checked out by our community members. We are now currently working on how to open safely. We're just working on some of the plexiglass barriers and other things to get the library back open as soon as possible, so we'll have an update on that in the very near future. And the other one, just a reminder, we did finish the new, everyone, you can't see it, but it's behind the walls, there, all the TV equipment, both here and in our server room. That has been all updated. It's all good to go. It's working well. And one of the good things with this new equipment is that the vendor we are using is now the one responsible for streaming all of our meetings to the Internet and then posting it to YouTube. Before you had to go to YouTube, it was like a three-way process for us to get it up for everybody. So this new cloud streaming service will be for all three of our channels, but the servants is currently only being used on 23, because that's the one we're using at the moment. And this new process will provide a much more stable and reliable service to our viewers, who will continue to access the stream via a link on the city council website. So it's really just a kudos to the rest of the, you know, Greg and his group on getting the whole system up and running, and now it's a very reliable system versus you've seen in the past where we would drop off during meetings. Just a shout out to them.
Thank you for that, and we do appreciate a more stable streaming service, especially given not just COVID, but moving forward. So thank you to all the staff for working on that. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. We'll open the floor for public comment on consent calendar items. We do have in-room attendance, so if you would like to speak on the consent calendar, now is the time to do it. You have a max of three minutes. Our phone line is still open as well for those that are not in attendance, and if you would like to call in, the number is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. Again, the number to call in is 805-875-8201. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to step to the podium and comment on consent calendar? While we wait to see if there are any calls at 805-875-8201, I will read the parameters for consent calendar. All items listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call in and no one rise for public comment, we will close it on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns? Before I take a vote, I do want to call out again that the Public Power Division, the Electric Division One, a diamond designation. This is something that is huge for our city and our staff. CJ, if you'd like to speak to that briefly, I think it's really important that our community be aware of that award.
Yes, thank you again for the opportunity to be up here. I just want to share some statistics with you, and I think this will really go a great length in kind of understanding how important this award is. There are more than 2,000 public power utilities in the country. Of those 2,000-plus utilities, 112 of them nationwide hold this designation. Of those 112, 47 of them were awarded this year. So less than 2% of all the public power utilities in the country received this award this year. It's really a tremendous accomplishment. And although it is termed the reliable public power provider, I think it's very important to acknowledge this wouldn't have been possible without the help of every other department in the city. We couldn't have done it without finance. We couldn't have done it without HR, without PD, without fire, without every other department assisting in achieving these goals. So I guess I get to be the lucky one that's humble enough to present this plaque to the council, and I hope we find a great place to be able to display it and honor not only the employees of the city, but the guidance of the council that got us here.
Thank you again for clarifying all of that for our public. I think it's really important that they hear and thank you, and we'll make sure we do find a great place for this to be posted. I want to say thank you, and again, not only to the Electrical Department, but to all of the staff that worked so hard on this. I think time and time again, having a public utility, being able to provide reliable, reasonably-priced energy in the current time is really important, and despite our difficulties of getting our utility statements out, I think that despite that, this is an impressive accomplishment. So please, please thank staff and tell everyone how much we, as council, appreciate them.
Absolutely, and I do, I do want to call out one person. Our own Jennifer Main is with us this evening, and I want to acknowledge her specifically, because although it was a team effort to get here, it was her efforts that got the application submitted. So that's, having been the one done that before, I know how tedious and time-consuming it could be. So thank you, Jennifer, for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. So just wanted to call that out. That was really important. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. Consent calendar passes 5-0. All right. The first oral communication of the evening that is not related to an agenda item is open. You have three minutes maximum to speak on city-related matters. If you are in the room, you're welcome to step forward to the podium for your three minutes. If you are at home and watching and would like to comment, the number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio, and we'll begin with in-room oral communication.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne and members of the city council. Ann McCarty, North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. Resiliency, or the ability to recover from or adjust easily to adversity or change, has been on my mind a lot lately. As a nonprofit organization serving the Lompoc Valley, we work with other community partners to help build a resilient community. We also talk a lot about the power of our voices, both individually and collectively. We tirelessly try to empower survivors of sexual assault, child abuse, domestic violence, and human trafficking to use their voices. In April, we increased that emphasis by encouraging the community to get involved, speak up, and speak out. Thank you, Mayor Osborne and Councilman Ball, for joining us on April 1, as we planted a garden of pinwheels for prevention on our property across the street from City Hall. Thank you for acknowledging the work being done in your community to address the issue of child abuse. Thank you for continuing the conversation with those in your circles and planting seeds of change that we hope will help the community stem the tide of child abuse. Sadly, child abuse, well, all forms of violence, are an issue in our town. But for our children, those who are often voiceless, made to keep quiet, shamed into silence, and threatened with further abuse, we are listening. In 2020, Child Welfare Services received 831 referrals for abused children in the Lompoc region. I think we can all agree that that is far too many. The saddest part is that these are only the reported cases, as many statistically went unreported due to the pandemic. While I rarely do public math, numbers do interest me, especially when they're tied to trends. When I look at the number of individuals we have served in the last nine months alone, as well as the number of individuals the victim advocates stationed at the Lompoc Police Department have served, the hair on the back of my neck stands up. What is important for you to hear is that our numbers are rising, despite the pandemic and despite what you hear about reports being down. Believing it's happening less creates a false sense of security we can ill afford. The center feels the impact of an 8.3% increase in people and a 28.74% increase in clients compared to the same time period last year. In looking at the number of cases the victim advocate has been exposed to at the police department for the same time period, while the number of people has dropped slightly by 6.5%, the services provided or attempted has dramatically increased by over 50%. I'm sucking air through this mask, so I'm going as fast as I can. I'm almost done. The increased need for service during these uncertain stressful times is manifested by an increased need for follow-up with those victimized, 62 assists with obtaining restraining orders, and virtual court accompaniments, to name a few. None of this has been easy, and it continues to get more difficult, given her restricted access to the department. But getting back to resiliency, advocates in your community, serving the people you too serve, must be resilient in order to do this work. We live deep within the pain of others, absorbing what most people never want to see or hear, but we can't do this work alone. Acknowledge sexual assault and child abuse prevention is something you take seriously. Continue to talk about it. Post it for all to see, and amplify your voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, oral communication for three minutes is open. The number to call is 805-875-8201.
But those two can share. The mayor can share, and then me can share. So good evening. My name is Shondell Malcolm, and I'm here to talk about the body-worn cameras once again for Lompoc. You know, last year, we had the unfortunate death of George Floyd, and we had a, an event here where we came to city council and we requested that the police department have body-worn cameras. This is not the first time. 2013, the police department had body-worn cameras, and the program was suspended. Every year since then, this topic has been brought up and it's been pushed aside. We still don't have body-worn cameras. It has now been eight years, and we have had multiple police officers involved in shootings, the last one being March 26 of Chris Ruiz, where he was killed. So we are again coming forward to city council, and we are asking, I'm not saying we are asking. As you see, I have a petition going. At 4 o'clock, I was trying to meet the deadline. There were 771 signatures. That's what you have in front of you. Before this meeting started, we were over 800 signatures. Lompoc is not asking for body-worn cameras. We are demanding that the police department get body-worn cameras. This not only helps the citizens of Lompoc, it also helps protect the police officers. This is way past overdue. So I want to know what it's going to take to get this city council to put that on the agenda and vote on it, because it was supposed to be on the agenda prior to April, since our contract expired, but it's now April 6, and it's still not on the agenda. Lompoc wants answers.
Thank you. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, radio, or PC. In-room public comment is also still open. Seeing no one call in and no additional in-room oral communications, will be closed, and we will move to the next agenda item. Item number eight is appointments to the Beautification and Appearance Commission, the Planning Commission, the Public Safety Commission, and the Utility Commission, for terms ending 12/20/22 and 12/20/24. The Parks and Rec application has been withdrawn, so when we get to that, I'll remind the public what positions are open. So we will start with the Beautification and Appearance Committee, and we have an appointee from District 2. Councilmember Vega, are you prepared to appoint Ms. Judith Alderman?
I'm going to make an appointment here. We're still waiting for an outreach from her, so not tonight.
Okay. All right. So that will be on hold. The next group to review is Planning Commission. This has three outstanding appointments for myself, Councilmember Starbuck, and Councilmember Vega. We have four applications, and I will look to my fellow council members to potentially make their appointments first. So do either of you have an appointment from the applicants listed? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, for Planning Commission, I'd like to appoint Mr. Dan Battiger.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck, do you have an applicant?
Not right now.
Okay. All right. I will go ahead and nominate Federico Cioni to return to the position. Anybody else? I need a second on those two motions.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second for the Dan Batter shots for District 2 and Federico Cioni for District 3. Any questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. The Public Safety Commission has three positions open, one for myself, oh, four positions open, actually. Myself, Councilmember Starbuck, Councilmember Vega, and Councilmember Cordova. I will open the floor to Councilmember Vega or Starbuck first, if either of you have. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Johnny Hudson.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega, do you have a nominee for the?
Yes, ma'am. I've spoken to both of these applicants, and I'd like to thank both of them for applying, and I'd like to appoint or nominate Roberta Battiger for Public Safety.
Okay. I will go ahead and appoint Lillian Street to the other open position. If I could get a second for those.
I'll give you a second.
We have a second. Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. We have the Utility Commission, and I do not see any applicants from either Councilmember Starbuck or Vega, but given the two applicants remaining are not either of those districts, I would like to go ahead and nominate Robert Holloway, Mr. Holloway, to continue on the Utility Commission, and I will take a second for that.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. So the remaining positions that are open from council appointment-based are Parks and Recs has two positions, District 2 and District 3. Utility Commission has positions open for District 2 and District 3. Public Safety has a position open for District 1, and Planning Commission has a position open for District 3, and Beautification has a position open for District 1. So those positions are still available. If you live in any of those districts and are interested in serving, please don't hesitate to submit your applications. You can find them on the city website, or you can contact our city clerk, Stacy Haddon, for an application and be able to return it either via mail or email. All right. Item number nine is council appointments that are at-large to the Airport Commission and the Library Commission. For the Airport Commission, we have one at-large ending 1/2022 and two at-large ending 1/2024. We have an applicant, Mr. Donald Jeff Palmer. So I will entertain a motion, and remember in your motion to choose a term with the motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I'll go ahead and nominate Mr. Palmer and nominate him to the 2024.
And you want in the 2024 terms? Great. Do I have a second for that?
I have a second.
And we have a second. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. For the Library Commission, we have one at-large ending 1/2023, and we have one applicant, Mary Michelle Moore. I'll entertain a motion for that at-large appointment. Councilmember Cordova.
I'll go ahead and nominate Ms. Moore.
Thank you. I have a second.
Give a second.
And we have a second from Councilmember Ball. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0 as well. Congratulations to all of the applicants. We are beginning to move towards being able to have those meetings again, so you will probably be contacted by the staff department that lead, that manages those, and convene and convene a meeting to organize and vote in your chair and vice chairs. Any other questions or concerns before we move on from this topic? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to item number 10. Public hearing to consider Measure A, five-year local program of projects for fiscal year 2022 through 2026, and adoption of Resolution Number 6388 (21). And that will be a presentation by our Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer Craig Dearling.
Thank you all for taking the time this evening to consider the critical funding Measure A provides for our road program. This public hearing is required once a year to get our funding allocation for the next fiscal year. We also use it as an opportunity to look at our overall road budget and pavement condition. Measure A is the city's largest source of road revenue, shown in the bottom in green, about 40% of the annual road revenue. Other sources, state gas tax, SB 1 and others are shown there on the graph. And basically, the road funds serve many uses and primarily are in two categories. Operations that keep things working and capital projects that extend useful life. There are a lot of operational things the city does routinely, patching the pavement, repairing and upgrading sidewalks, maintaining street trees and vegetation, and so on, sign striping. Those things don't extend the useful life of the pavement measurably, but our more expensive capital projects do. So, here's a photo example of operations clearing some downed trees, showing they don't add useful life to the infrastructure, but they keep it usable. Capital projects, by contrast, do add useful life, but they're more expensive. So, we're very limited in how many we can do and their timing and scope. A complete street program includes both. We keep things operating on a daily basis and we, as much as we have budget for, try to extend the useful life and take care of the condition of those assets. Road needs, as it says in the staff report, road needs exceed available revenues. So, we have already significantly reduced operations, including staffing and other measures, as well as we're not doing as many capital projects as we would like to to really make the pavement condition and conditions of other infrastructure what everybody would like them to be. Without adequate operations, the daily immediate needs can't be met. And without capital, the condition of infrastructure continues to decline. Currently, this year, since we did a a little bit more robust paving program last fall, our pavement condition overall for the city is at a 55, which is two points above last year's presentation. So, that's good. It's the first increase in a handful of years. Largely, like I said, due to funding. Senate Bill 1 provided another bump in our funding after 2017, when that came into effect. So, that's been a big help for us. On the right side of this graph, it shows the average PCI goal of 70. That's just kind of a generally accepted industry standard. Average goal, I have some photos later that show what different numbers look like. We have a photo pretty close to a 70. This is our past 10-year PCI trend. And as you can see, it generally follows expenditure. So, in the lean years, when we didn't have money for capital, the condition really declined. But very recently, when we were able to invest in pavement rehabilitation, now the condition has climbed a little bit. And then, looking forward at the next 10 years, the very top line that is level and slightly increasing represents 2 million per year annual average expenditure using cost-effective approaches that are discussed a little on the staff report, and I'll discuss them more in this presentation. And the other lines represent different expenditure scenarios of more of a traditional approach, grinding and paving and overlaying and things like that. So, I guess basically, the story we're telling on this slide is currently, we have the budget to spend 2 million a year, and we plan to use these cost-effective measures to try to keep our pavement condition, if not level, slightly increasing. A little bit about what the pavement condition index is. It's basically the state of being or the readiness of use of the pavement. So, whether it's for an individual street segment or the city's entire network. And it's, we use it to manage that asset, to evaluate its current state, its rate of deterioration, project its future condition, and to gauge which types of maintenance treatments are appropriate. It's not exact. It's approximate. So, it's a tool that we use. And we use it as best we can for, to maintain our assets. It's calculated by recording the different distresses that are present in the pavement. And the primary considerations in that are the severity of those distresses and how prevalent they are, so how widespread those distresses are. I have some photos coming up about that also. The big distresses shown, there's a list of eight distresses that our pavement management program uses there. Alligator cracking or load-related cracking is probably the biggest one that takes away from our pavement condition index. So, for each roadway unit, we inspect about 10% of the surface area and attribute the area of each distress and the severity of that distress, add those up, and put it into our pavement management program, and it calculates deductions for each of those distresses. There's an example, some example data here for one of the photos on the next slide where about half of the, this particular photo with a PCI of 3, about half of it had high severity alligator cracking and another 8.9% medium, some distortions, which are bumps and sags, as well as some patching. So, that PCI of 3 is the bottom right. So, you can see the distress is both severe and prevalent. It's widespread. The 72 on the top left is close to the industry standard goal that has been established as the average desirable condition. And then, we have some different examples on down to the 3 at the bottom. What PCI means to roadway users and to the city. For roadway users, as PCI decreases, the safety, the ride quality, reliability, and the appearance of the roadway decrease. And for the city as the owner, as it decreases, our urgent and recurring repairs increase. The cost of those repairs increases, and the satisfaction of our customers decreases. A little bit about the city's pavement network. We have about 130 centerline miles of paved streets and alleys. And then, we have some breakdowns on the next few slides of those. Mileage of arterials, collectors, residentials, and alleys. And generally, they're listed here in descending order of volume and speed, traffic volume and speed. Our arterial PCI average is a 77 currently, and they make up about 3 million square feet of our pavement. Collectors are a 72, about 5 million square feet. Residential locals, 14 million square feet. The PCI 49, and alleys average a 33 currently, about 3 million square feet. So, a little bit more about each category. Arterials, they represent nearly 12% of our pavement. And they have generally the highest speeds and the highest traffic volumes. So, like Central Avenue is an example of one of our arterials, A Street, B Street. More vehicles use those roads and they travel faster. So, they have been our largest safety concern, as well as serving the highest volume of users. And they have been our highest priority to keep in good condition. So, their PCI is an average of 77. Collectors are the next step down, which generally have the next highest traffic volume, somewhat higher than average speeds. And they also, basically, as heavy loads increase, the rate of deterioration increases. So, arterials would have the most heavy loads and collectors second most. So, they would deteriorate second fastest. Get down to residentials or locals, which are generally low volume, generally low speed. And alleys, which are also generally low volume and low speed, although they serve some heavy utility and refuse traffic. Cost to maintain our street network. Here's just a few examples of different types of treatments. When historically, when pavements were in very bad condition, like PCIs of 25 or below, maybe even sometimes higher than that, reconstructing or deep rehabilitation was common, which may cost on the order of $13 a square foot. So, comparing that to the average PCI of our alleys at a 33, it would cost about $42 million to do that level of work to all of our alleys. Overlays are another common improvement, another common rehab method, including limited deep failure repairs. They would cost about $4 to $7 a square foot and would be common on a pavement condition level similar to what we have on our residential and local streets. If we did all of our residential local streets overlaid like that, it would cost about $70 million. Digouts and cape seals, like we've been doing mostly the last handful of years, including this last fall, where we do limited deep repairs only where the pavement has failed and then seal the whole surface with several layers to preserve it and keep it serviceable. We were able to do the combination of those treatments at about $1.60 per square foot, so quite a bit less than the more robust historical treatments. And if we were to do that on all of our collector and arterial streets, it would cost about $13 million. Bottom of the list, slurry seals, micro surfacings are a component of those cape seals that we have been doing. Usually, the top layer and sometimes also on the bottom. They're about 65 cents a square foot. But as we've been trying to keep up and stretch our budget, we've been using cost-effective strategies. Cost-effective measures save labor, material, transportation costs, and they prolong the useful life of pavement. But there are some drawbacks. They are often less smooth riding. So, the road isn't quite as smooth, more bumpy afterward than if you had milled it off and paved it with several inches of new pavement. They're less aesthetically appealing. And they often take multiple construction operations. So, they're not usually as fast and involve more inconvenience to public and nearby properties. And another point at the bottom of the slide, just to understand a little more about pavement deterioration. Repeated heavy vehicle loads are the leading factor in pavement deterioration. There are many factors that deteriorate pavement, but repeated heavy vehicle loads is number one. As it says in the staff report, using industry standard methods and the more expensive methods that nearly make things new again, it would cost approximately $56 million to bring the citywide average PCI up to 70. Additionally, using those same methods, it would cost about $8 million a year to keep it there. But we only have currently, in the next few years, we only have about $2 million per year, which, if we use cost-effective measures to expend that 2 million a year, we project that we can keep our PCI approximately level and extend the useful life of quite a few more streets than if we'd used the more expensive methods. Citywide operations, as shown in the table 2, table 1 shows revenue, and table 2 shows expenditures in the staff report. Citywide operations use most of the revenue, about 4 million a year. And capital can use what's left over. And as I mentioned, we're trying to stretch that as much as we can to make it benefit the city the most. Here are those tables from the staff report. So, revenue up top, shown per fiscal year, and there's about $2 million in excess of operations available for capital. In our experience, the last decade or so, it's been a lot more cost-effective to make our cape seal and similar projects larger, to get a better economy of scale. So, that's why expenditures are shown every other year in this bottom table. Because if we make the projects bigger, we can do more with the money. So, this first row is, first yellow row is street rehab projects funded by Measure A gas tax and some other recurring road funding sources. And the second row is those funded by citywide right-of-way maintenance funds. There is a correction to table 1 in the staff report. The total for columns, for the column fiscal year '21, '22, and '22, '23 were each low by $150,000 as a result of increasing this right-of-way maintenance to 750 per year, whereas it had been 600 per year before. So, the corrected numbers are shown up here, where you can add $150,000 to each of those two totals. Here's an example of one of our cost-effective projects from 2013, where we did limited deeper repairs in a severely failed area, sealed the street. And this is F Street north of College Avenue. And it looked well after five years, and it's still performing well. Some of the cost-effective strategies being used. We're continually trying to keep our operations as efficient as possible, as well as reducing the volume of those operations. Many staff positions had been kept vacant for the last decade or so. So, we're down about 30% that way. And that has been a way that our budget has been able to balance. And then, like I mentioned about these capital projects, we plan to continue to use those cost-effective capital project treatments, as well as to sequence them so that we can get the best benefit doing deep repairs where needed and spreading our improvements over the biggest area possible. Now, we're to the Measure A program of projects attachment to the staff report. The first column, first column of numbers, shows expenditures from the most recently completed fiscal year, which was 1920. So, this is that portion of the POP table, since the whole thing doesn't fit well on a slide. It just shows what we spent for the street maintenance division, engineering division, for overlays and rehab, urban forestry, and for some, our riverbank stabilization project that is constructed and just needs to finalize its vegetation establishment. And bottom row here, Measure A included a, well, I'll show you more specifically in a few slides, but included a requirement to spend 15% of what we receive on alternative transportation. So, that's why this is separated down here, maintenance and repair of bike and ped facilities. This is maybe more like the main part of the table, looking forward to the next five years. So, it shows what we So it shows what we, this top left number shows what we expect to carry over to the beginning of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And the second row are revenue estimates that SB CAG provided us. So they project we, this Lompoc will receive two-point-four million in twenty-one, twenty-two, two-point-five, and twenty-two, twenty-three, and so on. And then expenditures are shown below that, similar to in previous years, for operations as well as for overlays and rehabilitation. And then we have another, a bridge, safety and maintenance project. So this is, this is that alternative transportation section of the table. It's measured in five-year increments, so Lompoc is required to spend fifteen percent of its, of the revenue it receives through Measure A for finite five-year periods. And the, the second period in the Measure A program was fiscal year fifteen, sixteen through nineteen-twenty, and that has now closed, so we received eleven-point-seven million dollars. We spent one-point-eight, which in, which results in a fifteen-point-five percent expenditure, so we met our fifteen percent requirement. Looking forward to the next five years, we are projected to receive twelve-and-a-half million, so we estimate we'll spend almost one-point-nine in order to spend fifteen percent or more on alternative transportation. Couple photos of operations and capital. City needs to adopt its program of projects in order to receive Measure A funding for this coming fiscal year, and that funding is critical to both our road operations and to our capital projects. So the staff recommendation is to hold this hearing to consider the program and adopt the resolution that's attached or provide alternate direction.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Councilmember Starbuck.
Thanks, Craig. That was enlightening. I have a question about our right-of-way maintenance funds the city provides. It says it's been in the budget, it's going to be on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, et cetera. Where, where are we funding that? Where's that money coming from?
I can explain a little bit, and I might get some help from our finance staff if they're up for chiming in. But basically, from, from city enterprise funds that impact-
So this is part of enterprise reimbursement?
Yeah, it is enterprise funds that impact road right-of-ways.
So this is coming out of which enterprise fund, then?
So I'll, maybe I'll defer to Dean.
He said all of them.
All?
It comes out of all of them, and what we've been trying to do is the damages that the utilities are doing in the alleys, specifically using that money just for the alleys to repair the damages that those trucks are doing, and that's where the money comes from.
Just curiosity, I mean, years ago, we were told legal and defensible, and now we've heard now that it's not legal and not defensible.
Yeah, that's why we made the change, to make sure all that money's being used for streets and roads.
Councilmember Cordova.
So I recently sat down with the city manager and city staff and was able to kind of have a meeting regarding this, because I do get a lot of emails and, you know, calls from the public that they want to know, when is my street going to get repaired? When are we going to see repairs in our neighborhood? And I was so shocked to see, and staff was kind enough to actually give me this poster of the area, or actually of the entire city, which helped me to really visualize the impact that we have. But when I looked at it and I sat with staff and I discussed it, it's all red. A lot of it is red. And so when I'm thinking about how do we, my concern is this, that our current strategy of cost-effective, we keep calling it cost-effective, is really, should be called slow deterioration plan, because we're not getting any better. I realize that the funding comes from all the designated sources that staff has given in the presentation, but I'm just wondering, where do we go from here? How do we improve? Because if our, at this point, if we need fifty-eight million dollars to bring our street conditions up to that seventy, you know, percent PCI, and we're currently falling under fifty-five, but that's not including alleyways, which are some of the worst that I've seen, you know, in our community. I've seen some pretty bad alleys, and I know that a lot of people reach out to us about that. And I know that staff, even when I sat down with staff, they mentioned, hey, we just recently did some, some alleyways in the, I believe you had mentioned like in the M, N, or L street neighborhoods recently. So anyway, the point is, is that if that's, if we're at a fifty-five right now, and that's not including our alleyways, where do we go from here? How do we, we can't just continue to do what we've been doing and see any improvements. So is there a method for a long-term planning for improvements to our cities? Or is that just not something that, because I feel like we're taking on a report, and that's fine, to let the public know this is where we stand, but then, what do we do? And I know that's a tough question, because it's a, it's a financial question. Nobody has the money, but, I mean, I don't know if that's like something that we should be looking at, Dean, and maybe considering a, any kind of funding that we can at least say, hey, if we start dropping cents in the bucket or dollars in the bucket, at least five years from now, we can, we can assist in trying to make improvements, other than just continue to see this deterioration. I don't know. I'm asking the question, what can we do?
If I may, Mayor and Council, that's a tough one for literally every city. You know, as, as we talked in our meeting, the gas tax didn't increase from nineteen-ninety-three. In fact, the quantity that was received by the state would decrease, because from ninety-three till today, you know, we went from eighteen miles a gallon cars to thirty-five miles an hour, thirty-five miles per gallon cars. We also have many more electric cars that don't pay anything into the gas tax. So, so that was a problem, because then during that time, if you recall, oil prices kept going up, gas costs, you know, it's relative to the, the oil prices. So it's not that the gas price went up, we got more, it's, it goes off the volume of it. So as those needs went down, everybody's went down. So there, there's not a good, simple answer, because everybody would be doing it right now. Some cities, I was in one where they put in a half-cent sales tax and it was dedicated solely to roads, because they were getting that bad. You know, we do have, now that they've gone through, and is it SB one, Craig, that they, they made it?
Right. Yeah, this chart up here, she kind of shows when that started.
Yeah, so they made an adjustment to the gas tax. So now it, it does actually go with CPI. So as, as the costs go up, it, it'll actually increase. I know that's not great to hear from everybody, other than it does help fix our roads. So we will have a little bit of an increase going forward. By the time we get to, say, that average seventy, which is sort of a city average, it, it probably will take a while. You know, when we finish up with the current half-cent or the one-cent fifteen-year period we have, that might be a point where we can then readjust and go back to the public and ask, is this something we want to do? And, and either dedicate it as a special tax, which is harder to get, or make a commitment from the council that this is where it's going to go towards, sort of like we've done this time on the different issues that we had. It's just, there's not a, a good, easy revenue stream, other than, as you said, is, as we get some surplus every year, to put a portion of it, you know, towards streets and build up a million dollars to go do a little bit more. But it is going to take some time to get there.
Does our current, Dean, does our current budget allocate any kind of reserves for improvements to roads in that division or in that public works department?
No, I think all the revenue sources he identified. I know I did a study once and looked at how much each city normally pays, and we don't pay nearly as much as what most cities pay into their street funds from their general fund, and that's just because we don't have the extra money.
Yeah, and, you know, I make it a point to discuss this, because I really, really want to implore the council and staff to really recognize that this cost-saving, that all these years, we were, we were, from this dais, telling the public that we're being responsible and we're saving the city money and we're making cuts and we're making cuts and, it really doesn't benefit this community at all. And I have yet to see a department or division that benefited from all the years of cutting, 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 cutting. We're going into budget cycle and budget season, I want to say, and so if there's an opportunity ever for us to really start thinking about what is Lompoc going to look ten years from now, and like I said, if we can start dropping a few dollars into the buckets and start creating those buckets, that is what we really need to start thinking about, because just simply saying we don't have the money is not responsible, and it's not responsible that we don't have reserves, and it's not responsible because this community is continuing to deteriorate in every possible division that I could possibly think of. I don't even, I can't even, there's so many holes on the ship, I can't even plug them all anymore.
Councilmember Ball.
A couple things. Thank you so much for the presentation. I, I'll just say, I can't agree more with Councilwoman Cordova. We've got to, we've got to be very creative here, and it's going to take a lot of work. But the need is there, the citizens are definitely worried about the current condition of their streets and also the future of the streets. I did want to kind of piggyback on one thing. I know we, for some of us that have a, maybe a nicer house, or we live on a nicer street, and we have a driveway, there's a lot of people that live in our community that live in much denser housing, they don't have a driveway, they're lucky to park on the street, and the requirement for them in most situations is that they use the alley to access their parking spot. So I just want us to be conscious that alleys are not something that should be disregarded and thrown off as unimportant, and it's only a place where the trash truck goes. This is where a lot of people drive to go home. So I just want us to consider the complicated needs that our community has across the board. I don't, I know no one here has an answer. I would be curious over time, if, if the rumors of infrastructure, big spending happens, will there be additional opportunities for us to fund some of those things? That's the first place we have to look, if that happens. And then the only question that I had, just because for my own edification, is how do, you know, we have an average of different PCIs, but how do we decide, what is the, the protocol or procedure of deciding what place is worse than another and we should service that versus another part of town, or how do we, how do we look at that?
These slides, a little further down here, talked a little bit about our kind of prioritization, and basically it was safety problems first, so, which largely are highest speeds and highest volumes, create the most safety issues. And second priority level is highest volume of users. So how can you serve the most people, or what, or what expenditure is going to serve the most people? And then our, our third priority criteria is usually, what is the most cost-efficient way that we can spend the money? What, what can we get the best benefit out of, or, or what combination of locations or treatments can be most cost-effective?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring something up. I mean, I'm going to hear it again, you know, the council's cut, we've always done this, blah, blah, blah. Maybe somebody on staff could answer me the question of, how much money did the state take from us when we lost our vehicle license fee money?
They did do an initial reduction, but then they went back and gave us through property tax.
Right, but the vehicle license fee, which was dedicated money for roads, was gone.
I don't have that number in front of me, but-
Little over a mil, quite a bit of money. So I think it's a big thing to say staff has done a good job, because I've seen an arrow that ramped up here, after how many years of not having the license fee? That was money that was jerked and taken. So it's not always fire, fire, and cut.
Councilmember Cordova.
I one-hundred percent agree that it's not, I'm not saying it's staff's fault. I'm saying it's the responsibility of this council and to work with staff to try and determine with what we do have, what we had in the past, we had in the past. If it was taken away, it was taken away. But our residents still live here, and they're still driving those roads, so we can't sit and say, well, you know, because the state took away this funding. Those are the tough things, those are the tough decisions and the tough tasks that we have to take on seriously. I do also want to, want to say thank you to staff, because when I sat down and they explained to me, and they said, which is number ten, slide number ten, I think, is where you were asking Councilmember Ball with regards to how they rank the PCI, but, and then they explained to me the arterial streets, and when I look, when I went and drove those arterial streets, I thought to myself, yeah, those are the main streets through our city corridors that are well-maintained, and thank God, at least we have that, because it's great for our community that uses, everyone in our community uses those arterial streets and those connectors, so that's awesome. We just got to figure out a way to also think, how do we improve and impact the residential and the alleyways? Because most of alleyways are in neighborhoods where they're already impacted by a million other things, and on top of that, I've driven some of the alleyways in this town, and they're horrible in condition. And I'm not saying that, that's staff's fault. I'm saying that, you know, we need to be more responsible and at least try to say, let's start dropping some money in the bucket.
Any more questions for staff before we open to public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open for a public kind of, public comment on item ten. The number to call is eight-zero-five-eight-seven-five-eight-two-zero-one, eight-zero-five-eight-seven-five-eight-two-zero-one. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. If you're in the room and would like to speak on this item, you may come to the podium now, and you have three minutes. Again, the number to call is eight-zero-five-eight-seven-five-eight-two-zero-one, if you would like to call in, or you may come to the podium in person, if you're present. Seeing no one, call in, we will close public kind of comment on item ten and bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I will motion to accept the report, because we're, to hold the public hearing and adopt resolution six-three-eight-eight-two-one approving the LPP for years twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you.
No second.
Yeah, we have a second from Councilmember Vega. Any questions or concerns before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Item number eleven, adoption of resolution number sixty-three-ninety-four, parentheses twenty-one, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for the Floridale Crossing sewer line directional drill project and approving the project.
Let's see if I can remember how to do this. It has been a while. Yes, my name is Christos Stoyos, thanks, Stacy. I'm the principal civil engineer for the city of Lompoc, and I'm the person who oversees this particular project since two thousand and eighteen. It has to do with the realignment of the sewer interceptor that comes from the Van Brigg Village community. And today I came here to present you the staff report. It's basically an environmental- It's basically an environmental staff report. However, I'm hoping that you have some other questions in regards to the project, so I can answer basically everything. We're going to adapt this negative mitigation here, and it's, it's all been set in motion. However, if you do have any other questions in regards to the project, please feel free to ask me anything you, you think that you want to know. I'll put my glasses on. This project will realign and relocate the 18-inch interceptor sewer line, which serves the Vandenberg Village Community since 1974. We are in collaboration with the Vandenberg Village Community Services District since 2018 for this particular project, but since early 70s, when the Lompoc Valley Regional Waste Water Management System came into place. Then since 1974, the city of Lompoc and the Vandenberg Village Community Services District are in agreement, and the city is responsible to maintain and operate, and in this case, redesign and relocate this particular sewer line. Vandenberg Village Community Services District is required to reimburse the city for all costs incurred for the maintenance and operation of this facility over the years. And most recently, we have revamped this agreement back in May of 2020, just to ensure that the city, the Vandenberg Village Community Services District understands the magnitude of the project, this particular project. And let's see, here's the light. Okay. So you see, it starts from right here, up north of the highway, Highway 1. It goes through the Bureau of Prisons. It comes along the farm road, and then it crosses under the San Andres River, actually over the San Andres River, with, over the Floridale Bridge, which is currently, which currently the county is planning to replace with a much nicer and much stronger bridge. This particular bridge has been in operation since the late 60s, and it has been deemed inefficient in terms of its seismic capacity. So, let's go here. Oops. Let me just go. Okay. A little bit closer picture of the particular project. It comes, as I said, from the Vandenberg Village. It, there was, actually, we're talking about three different alignments here. The first alignment, that was back in the 70s, it was the one that we're proposing to use right now, under the San Andres River. However, a big huge storm in the late 70s unearthed the sewer line, and since the 78, I believe 79 was, the sewer line is actually coming along this blue line on the bridge. And it's been like that since 78. The county is going to be replacing the bridge, and it's going to be shifting the bridge a little bit to the west, approximately 60 feet, which has demanded we realigned the sewer line along with the new bridge. And we started doing so back in 2018. However, once we got all the plans and all the specs and all the costs involved, we realized that this particular approach was a little bit too costly. Not as much as in terms of the capital cost, but as much as in terms of operations and maintenance. And therefore, since October, we got together with the, the community, with the district, and we decided to follow a different approach, and we are proposing to follow the horizontal drill approach, which will bring the sewer interceptor back to its original alignment, which is this yellow line here. And that's how it used to be before it was scoured out from the floods of the 70s. This particular, this particular alignment lies within an existing easement that the city has from the Department of the Army, the old Department of the Army. Right now, it's the Bureau of Prisons. And we're going to drill from approximately this location all the way down to this location, and approximately 15 feet below, and we can go to the next slide. You can see here, this is the, we go approximately 15 feet below the anticipated scouring line. This is, the top line you see here is the existing bed, right now, the San Andres River. The projected scouring line back in the year 275, I believe it is, yes, 275, is going to be approximately down here. And therefore, we're proposing to put a line 15 feet below this particular and anticipated scouring back in 75, up to 75, in 2075. So that's going to be our project. We're going to start from the banks of the river. We're not going to touch any of its vegetation, and we're going to drill underneath it and come out to the other location where we're having the inlet vault, the inlet and the outlet vaults. A little bit about the project history. Like I said a little bit earlier, we, we designed this project to follow the county's bridge, the new bridge location. Later on, we decided that that was not the best approach. We had to deal with several accessibility issues on the new bridge for maintenance purposes that would have increased our, our annual maintenance costs. We have to actually have traffic control on the bridge every time we would maintain it, because some of the valves that we are going to maintain, we were going to maintain, will be on the top of the bridge, so we had to close, close section of the bridge in order to maintain it. Safety was one of the reasons, because we would have to be out there on the actual bridge while we're checking these valves. And of course, the maintainability, which, which is, the, the first proposal was to put the bridge, to put the pipe along the bridge. And as you understand, this pipe would have incurred a lot of erosion and a lot of, a lot of corrosion, oh, not erosion, corrosion, sorry, a lot of corrosion, which we would have to, of course, pay for it over the long run. You know, you have to paint the pipe every so often, and we didn't know what else the county will require, require us to do, of course, in terms of this particular pipe. So the maintenance cost was an issue, the accessibility, the access was an issue, and the safety was an issue. So we decided to follow the, the direct, the horizontal direct drilling approach, and we're going to put, we're proposing to put the sewer interceptor within this existing 20-foot easement that was originally constructed in 70, in 1974. Since the February of 2021, we have issued the notice of intent to adopt, which was published and circulated for public comment through the State Clearing House. We received some responses from the Tumas Indian Tribe. We received some, some comments from the Air Pollution Control District, and we also received some comments from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The comments have been answered. We have issued a notice of determination and also mitigation monitoring program, based on all the comments we received, put together. And we are proposing to move on with this project, especially during the period of the next two years, where the county is going to be replacing this bridge, and we're going to be working concurrently with this, with the county's project. So the project is, if it's not going to be constructed within this fall, fall period, it will be constructed next fall, which is the fall of 2022. So staff recommends that you consider the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt resolution number 639421, which adapts the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program, and then approve the Floridale Crossing Sewer Line Directional Drill Project, and direct staff to implement the project, and return later on, probably in three, four months, to city council, so we can approve the construction contract, if that's the case. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Christos? Councilmember Ball.
I just had to have fun with this for a little bit. I don't mean to embarrass or offend anyone, but the last time we fixed the sewer pipe was 1979, and that was the year I was born. So it needs to be done, and thank you for your hard work and great presentation, and I hope this goes smoothly.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of staff before we open to public comment? Seeing none, thank you. We will open the phone lines for public comment on item number 11, 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. It's also available for in-room commentary, so if you are present at the meeting and would like to step to the podium and speak on this issue, you have three minutes. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. And for anyone watching, just because I'm filling in the timeframe while we wait to make sure there aren't any phone calls, because if I go quiet for too long, it stops recording. We have all been handed out the copy of the unfortunate map of our current street conditions that Councilmember Cordova was kind enough to share with us all, and we'll make sure and have it attached as part of our updated agenda items. So anyone interested in looking at this map can, can see it, and it is unfortunately quite red. So again, the number to call is 805-875-8201 for comments on item 11. And you are welcome to speak in person, if you're present at the meeting, for three minutes on the Floridale Crossing Sewer Line Directional Drill Project. Someone just making sure our phone lines work? All right. So we will close public comment on item 11. We'll wait to see. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. Go ahead and provide your public comment. You have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Joe Barquette. I'm the general manager of Vandenberg Village Community Services District, and calling on behalf of our district and our board. We just had a board meeting ourselves tonight, just wrapped up the board meeting, but I just wanted to call in and say that we fully support the staff recommendation and really appreciate the work that Christos Stoyos and Stacy Lawson have done on the mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you for that call of support, and we appreciate you verifying the Vandenberg Village Community Service District working in tandem with our staff. We'll go ahead and close public comment on item 11 and bring it back to council for Councilmember Ball.
I need to learn how to do this. Okay, so I make a motion to adopt resolution number 639421 that adopts the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program.
You are correct. Do I have a second?
I'll give a second.
And we have a second. Thank you so very much. Any questions or concerns before we vote?
Mayor.
Yes.
There was a second part to that staff recommendation, which was to also approve the project.
So accept A through B, A through C.
There you go.
All right. So say your motion, accepting A through C.
I make a motion to accept all of staff's recommendation on this, A, B, C, or 1, 2, 3, however you want to say.
Awesome. It's A, B, C. All right. And Councilmember Vega, you've seconded that, don't you?
Yes.
All right. So we've got the corrected motion and the corrected second. Any additional questions or concerns? Thanks for catching that, city attorney. Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Item number 12, award of a professional services agreement for annual financial auditing services to Lance Saul and Lundcard, LLP, for the city of Lompoc and the Successor Agency Private Purpose Trust Fund. And we have Christie Donnelly as our accounting and revenue manager to make the presentation. Welcome.
Mayor.
Is this your first presentation?
This is my first presentation to the council.
We'll go easy on you. How's that?
Thank you. So to start with, I do, would like to take a minute to introduce myself to council, since this is the first time that I am presenting. I am going to try to keep the presentation as succinct as possible. So my name is Christie Donnelly. I am the accounting and revenue manager. I've been with the city for a little over a year and a half. I have 15 years of accounting experience, nine of which has been in government and nonprofit I'm originally from the Bay Area, and that was part of why we moved back, to be close to family. I got my undergraduate degree at UC San Diego, and then went and met my husband and lived in Colorado for 22 years, raising our family. Moved back here a year and a half ago, and, you know, we had a manager in Colorado who used to answer the question, "How are you doing today?", with the snarky response of, "Oh, I'm living the dream." I actually answer that question, "I'm living the dream," because that is what I'm doing right now. We fell in love with the Central Coast years ago and had been planning for a move out here, and it has just been a dream come true to be here. I want to segue with that and say that part of that dream is having a great job, and the part of having a great job is having a great team. I have one of the best teams that I have ever worked with and had the privilege of working with, both in my direct reports with my manager, who is dean, as well as the extended management services group. They are the most hardworking, dedicated, professional, non-drama people that I have ever had the privilege of working with. And I just want to let you all know that, as somebody who's coming in from the outside, having worked in several different areas, just what a great group of people you have on staff here. So just to start off, now that you know a little bit about me, and maybe hopefully know that I have, know a little bit of what I'm talking about, the question is, why do we need external auditors? Do we even need them? And the short answer is yes. The first and easy answer for that is for regulatory reasons. The state tells us we need them. The federal government tells us we need them because of the federal grants that we receive, and banks tell us we need them because we are issuing debt. But I would propose that even beyond the legal reasons, we need them to build trust and transparency with our citizens. It is important that we get an outside expertise and an outside perspective, so that when we're putting together this book, our comprehensive annual financial report, that we know that what's in it is accurate and representative of what actually happened. And the way we do that is by having external people come in and look at our processes, our procedures, and the numbers that are in here. We have received the last several years, the comprehensive, the award for excellence in financial reporting from the GFOA, and that is something that we take a lot of pride in. And it tells us that what we are doing, what we are reporting here, can be trusted. So we've established that we need financial, external financial audit. Can we afford it? Well, I would say that we, we can't afford to not. So yes, this is a budgeted item. It has been for the past 10 years or more, and it will continue to be, at least it is our expectation, it will continue to be a budgeted item. And that's all the detail on this slide about which accounts and so forth. Why now? Auditing standards require that we switch auditors, or at least audit partners, every five years. We've had our current audit firm... We've had our current audit firm, Glenn Burdette, for the past 10. We switched our partner five years ago with Glenn Burdette. We've been very pleased with Glenn Burdette, and they've done an excellent job. They helped us get to the point where we were able to receive that certificate, and we're very grateful for that. But the selection committee had to consider pros and cons of keeping the same audit firm and rotating partners again, or getting a new audit firm. So some of the benefits of staying with this current audit firm would be the fact that we do have a strong working relationship. There is ease of communication, there's familiarity with the process. But at the same time, comfortable isn't always better. There is an increased potential for missing fraud when you work with somebody over a long period of time, decade after decade, and there's comfort there. Now, moving on with another audit firm has its set of pros and cons as well. So there, you get a new perspective, you get new processes. Potentially, they will find gaps in items that have been previously missed. On the flip side, it does take additional time to get a new audit firm up to speed. They have to learn all of our funds, all of our structure. We are a full-service city with a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of financials that go into that. We have, I believe the last time I counted, it was 36 different funds. Five of those are major funds. Each one of those could be considered a separate business, and we need to know that we can get an audit firm up to speed. There's also the challenge of having potential one-time spike in audit findings, and that's just because when you bring in somebody new, they may look somewhere new. That isn't necessarily a bad thing, because we want to have people find everything that is potentially a weakness in the financials. We don't, we don't think that there are, but that was why we have auditors. So for this proposal period, we put out for RFP January 15th, we did decide to invite our current auditors to submit a proposal, wanting to evaluate that on its merits, because there are pros and cons. We sent it out, sent an email to about 10 different firms through email. We posted it on our website. We published it in the Lompoc Record, and we published it on the CSMFO website, which is the, let's see if I can get this right, California Society of Municipal Finance Officers' website. So we cast a wide net. The RFP closed on February 24th. All proposals are required to be irrevocable until April 25th. So that's how long we have to get a contract signed. We did receive seven proposals. We evaluated those on three categories. Mandatory requirements, pass or fail. If you didn't get past the mandatory requirements, you didn't get reevaluated further. Technical requirements were 75% of the score, and pricing was 25%. And just want to talk a little minute to this. We want to make sure that whoever we hire is going to do a great job. And pricing, while a factor, should not be the driving factor, because we want to make sure that we're hiring quality. On pricing, we did receive sealed bids, and those were opened after we evaluated the technical scores. So of our seven, two firms did not pass the mandatory requirements. Those mandatory requirements included items like being independent, being certified in California, following the directions of the RFP, and having a peer review that showed quality audit work. So the five firms that we did evaluate are up on the screen. When we looked at technical requirements, we looked primarily at expertise and experience. We're looking at the depth of their staff. How many staff are they going to provide to the engagement? Do they have good training resources for our staff as we look to implement new GASB implementations that are complex? And really, do they have the depth and the experience with cities? This was our technical results in rank order. You can see at the top, LSL, which is Lance, Saul, and Lungard, scored 73 out of 75 points. Everybody did well. They did great. And we went on to pricing. And this is a five-year total. We are asking for an agreement, a three-year agreement with the optional two one-year extensions. And so for the five-year total, the total price is up on the screen. And point out that the number five technical scored number one in pricing. But interestingly, our number one technical scored number two in pricing. And so this is the rank order of our pricing. And you can see that while there is difference, it is not a significant difference between the lowest and the highest score. Combined overall, and you can see here that the greenish-blue on the bottom is our technical score, and the purple up on the top is the pricing score. So combined, we've got the first three on the left scored a solid B, 85%. We, we could, we could use one of them. However, also scoring a little bit better, that brought with the second ranked, we'd say a B+. You can see where this is going. LSL was our one A student, and they scored 97 out of 100. LSL showed extensive experience with small and large cities. They had professional depth and experience. They offer in-person training workshops. And when we called on their references, including some that they didn't actually tell us about, but that I tracked down, they all said excellent, communicative, always helpful, flexible. And so we would like to recommend, and the exact wording is in the staff report, that we award, that council would award a professional services agreement to the highest-ranked firm, LSL. You have any questions?
Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you, and thank you for the testimonial regarding not only your relocation here, but your, you know, commitment to your job and your partners in crime in the finance management department. We appreciate all the hard work you and the rest of the staff do on this. With no questions for staff or questions, we'll go to public comment. On item 12, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, PC, or radio. And we have in-room public comment as well, which also has three minutes.
Mayor, council. So why are audits important? I'm just going to read a little excerpt from California Government Code, Section 8546. Authorize the state auditor to establish a high-risk local government agency audit program called the Local High Risk Program to identify local government agencies that are at high risk for potential waste, fraud, abuse, mismanagement, or that have challenges associated with their economy, efficiency, effectiveness. It says, "The auditor focused their efforts on evaluating risks facing California cities. This program, the High Risk Program, has two elements: interactive JAS board. The auditor collects and analyzes key financial data, the KFER, about California cities and use it to develop an interactive dashboard that identifies those cities that could be facing physical challenges. Through this transparent interface, California residents, state and local policymakers, and interested parties have data-driven view of each city's physical health. This year, we performed additional analysis to evaluate the additional risk of COVID." Part two, audits. After establishing our list of cities facing physical challenges, we conduct initial assessments to further evaluate the risk for those cities. The initial assessments inform whether we will seek approval from Joint Legislative Audit Committee to conduct an audit of a city. If a city is designated as high-risk as a result of an audit, it must submit a corrective action plan and provide updates every six months regarding its progress in implementing corrective action plan. We will remove the high-risk designation only when the city has satisfactorily corrective action." So on October 19th, the auditor launched a new tool, an online dashboard, that ranks more than 470 California cities about their physical health. What I didn't see on here is how our audit agency will help you with this. And the reason that I'm concerned is that the most recent review ranked Lompoc the 19th worst city in the state of California. 95% of the cities ranked higher than Lompoc did. The previous ranking was 46, so we've dropped substantially in the last reporting cycle. I've heard all of you discuss cuts, 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 budgets, this and that, but it serves no purpose to gather this data if this data is not evaluated by the council. So I implore you to take a look at this and ask whichever auditor that you get to look at this, because you're only five points away from being a high-risk city. And then you will be mandated, it won't be a choice, you will be mandated to have a corrective action plan. So please implement this as part of your contract. Thank you.
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. And again, if you are present in the council and would like to speak to it, you may also step to the podium for your three minutes on item 12. Seeing no calls and no additional in-room commentary, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova.
So I think in Ms. Donnelly's presentation, she mentioned, and the staff report mentions, that this is a practice that we're already doing. We're now selecting a different firm, and the, the audit is conducted of our accounting and the uses and what we're saying the uses of our funds were. So the auditing is confirming that what we say money we received and money we spent is actually what we did, correct?
That is the majority of it, yes. They also are looking at our processes and procedures and making sure that, that the way that the numbers get in there is accurate and flows properly.
Okay. So great, yeah. So I feel like the city staff is already being responsible in that method. And this is something that I had on my notes from before, that when I think about, I don't know if it would be services that an audit firm would do, or if, and I think I briefly discussed this with the city manager a little while ago, when the possibility was evident that maybe we might not have Dean during budget season. Whether it be an auditing firm, or whether it be a consultant, that maybe the city should consider bringing in to say, okay, this is what, the way we are currently using our resources, but is it really the best way? Or is there a way to restructure or to help with the limited resources that we have where we can reconfigure what is the best way to maximize, I guess? Because I would hate to have Lompoc fall into a bucket where we are considered an at-risk city, but if we're going to talk about that, I don't think it's because of the way we are, or because of us mismanaging funds. I think it's because we have such limited resources that our, our community really isn't really getting the benefit of, you know, us being able to do as much as we'd want to do. So looking at the future, I just thought that is there a possibility, whether through an auditing firm or through maybe a consultant, to say, well, you know, is there a possibility that we can look at restructuring how we, or at least implementing some steps? Because I feel like we've been doing business as usual for so many years, and times are changing. Our needs keep growing, our demands are growing, our revenue is the only thing that's not growing.
City manager? Is that you looking to speak?
No, I was going to say, yes, we've had a conversation before. I can, you know, Dean and I can discuss it, and also Kristi, to see if there's, if we can find somebody out there that does that type of consulting. You know, the audit firms don't usually get into that area, but we can look and see if there's anybody else out there that, you know, retirees that have done that and gone into the business of that.
And I think because also part of that was a couple of meetings ago, when we were discussing whether we wanted to potentially spend the money to get, what was, when we were discussing to spend the money to go on to the next step for, God, it's slipped my mind, but our credit worthiness. We were talking about our credit worthiness as a city, and $25,000 to really bring us to light as to what our credit worthiness is and how do we improve it is not money that would, would be wasted. It's, it's us really looking at our finances and saying, are we credit worthy and how do we get there as a city? Because...
Right. That was, and that's still coming back to council. I'm trying to, I'm working with the consultants that were there. No, that would be something I think would be good. That, that'll be a little bit different. That one will look more like an audit firm would do, is looking to see, is everything there? Is it aligned? Do the policies match? Are we following the policies? Are we updating them and, excuse me, whatnot? So that one, I think, is a good, oh, yeah.
I think something that's worth making a comment is the reason, I'm not surprised we're that low in the ranking. And that really comes down, and you guys have been hearing me say this over and over, what our fund balance is and how it went negative. That's one of the things they look at. That's a big score. Your general fund is your backstop. At the general fund, I mean, you can do anything you want with. You can bail anybody out. When you have nothing, you have no way of bailing everybody out, that's when your score goes up, when your liabilities are out of control. And ours are. They're out of control. You guys heard me just recently say, this is what we need to concentrate on. So I'm not surprised that's what happened. I know that we're going to, like I told you guys before, we're expecting to be positive 2.5 million. That's going to change our score tremendously. And plus, I'm hoping that our liabilities will start going down as we try and pay some of that off.
And, and thank you for that clarification, Dean and city manager, Mr. Trup, because I think this is something completely different than, than, than what worrying about our credit worthiness and worried about, you know, our strategy for long-term financial health. But that's also a priority for me. And so when, when, Dean, when you talk about that, I do think it's important for us to look at that, because if we have a surplus, and like you said, a surplus, and like you said, we, we have been down, you know, skimping the bottom of the barrel on a lot of things, we need to find a way to kind of reestablish those, those levels. But I'm getting off on a different tangent. So I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that, yes, this report is very important. Staff is already doing it, and we need to continue to do it, but we also need to look at what the other side of the coin is, which would be our credit worthiness and our, you know, our, our future planning, financial planning.
Any other comments before we entertain a motion? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah. And this goes out to Dean and the accounting manager. The last person making that public comment, you know, we've all read articles that show the, the fact that Lompoc is a financially distressed city. It's on the list. It does make you take a look at seeing if there are some, in fact, as stated there, are there, are there things that are going to trigger other things? You know, we should know this. If we drop on the rankings... If we drop on the rankings, is in fact, or is it going to be mandatory, whatever we do here with our accounting firms as far as reporting or not? It sounds like everyone knows, but we'd like to know what the triggers are and not wait till it hits us in the forehead.
The comprehensive value of financial report, I think somebody said it up there, is really a disclosure. Are we following generally accepted accounting principles? Are we following the GAAP? So it's really, do the transactions really happen? Do they happen in that period? But you're totally right. A ranking is big and really important. I mean, we did financing for some solid waste collection vehicles. And the one that won the bid, we went back to him and said, all right, we want you to finance our vehicles. And they told us, no, we see your general fund. We don't want nothing to do with you. So, yeah, our ratings are important, and we need to work on that. I know we're going to have better ratings. I know we're going to look better after this year. And we do have a plan to get out of this. You know, the I-2020 is going to get us out of this hole, so.
You know, I hear the comment from Councilwoman Cordova about if we have some additional revenues or extra revenues, you know, we're good at, sure, we can spend it. But there are ways of bolstering our credit rating by having additional reserves, or even if it's an uncertainty fund or whatever in all the funds. Even when we went back to pension bonds, it looked like one of the main structures of having a pension bond or not having a pension bond was having a reserve for the peaks and the spikes and whatever, if CalPERS was, didn't prevail in their investments. So it seems like that would be a basis, you know, of our foundation. So hopefully, we'll be able to address that. So thank you so much. Okay, I want to make those comments.
Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for item 12. Councilmember Cordova.
So I motion to accept staff recommendation for awarding the professional services agreement to L.S. and L. And enter into agreement with them.
Thank you.
I'll give it a second. That's great.
All right, so we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Vega. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, did we have any additional written communications?
No, ma'am, nothing that you've already received.
We'll go ahead and open the floor for the last oral communications of the evening. You have two minutes to speak on a city matter. 805-875-8201, if you'd like to call in. If you're in the room, please step to the podium for your two minutes.
Mayor, City Council. So just to touch upon, I read directly from the state, so I wasn't implying that there's any malfeasance on the part of staff or anything. It was simply what was listed on there. But in regard to the rankings, there were 10 items. General fund reserves are a big point item in the ranking. Debt burden, liquidity, revenue trends, pension obligations, pension fundings, pension costs, future pension cost, other liabilities for past employee benefits, the obligations and the funding. So the state has a pretty elaborate system by which they look at each individual city's CAFA reports. There are handfuls of cities that are excluded because for some reason, either they didn't provide their CAFAs or they're exempted from their CAFA reports. But we can spend hours and hours saying why this was cut, why that was cut, why we don't fund this, why we don't fund that. All of you are business people. It's a revenue and expense issue. It's really basic. I think Councilwoman Cordova was on point, saying that we have a revenue issue. I would agree to a certain extent, but also say that if you review the CAFA reports, which we spend a substantial amount of money on, you'll see that revenues have actually continued. The problem we have is it's costing more and more money to deliver the same services. I tried to buy a piece of plywood the other day that I used to pay $9 for, $36. $9, there's a tremendous increase in cost across the board. So, you know, but these are things that we have to have discussions with on a council level, because you're not going to be able to provide the same service even though you're increasing revenues. The costs are outpacing revenues in every segment of our economy. So, you know, before, if we get money from the stimulus, pump up the things and meet with, the auditor gives help to the cities. Figure out what we need to get that ranking up, and let's get that ranking up.
Thank you. Again, oral communication is also available still through our phone lines. And you have two minutes to speak to City Matters. Seeing no one call in, we will close general oral communications. In order to keep working on the timeframe before we go to potentially close session, we'll go ahead and go through council reports, requests, and meetings. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Darn, this was an evening where you didn't have to rush through no reports, given we have a closed session to get to. Councilmember Cordova. No, that's been closed.
Okay, so I wanted to discuss and maybe provide clarification with regards to our commissions and how they were restructured. And everybody was pretty much off, and everybody came back on as new. Will there be a reselection of chairs for each of those commissions? Even if existing chairs were still able to stay on, whether it be through their districts or through selection by an open seat? Because I had a question come up from one of my commissioners, and I wanted to make sure that that was clarified, because I don't think we clarified that.
Yeah, so each commission would reappoint, you know, either the new or if that previous chairperson said, I'll do it again, and they voted for it. But they would be a new vote to appoint a chairperson.
So they would go to their first meeting and then have that first meeting?
The first action would be that.
Okay, because I wanted to make that clear. I think there was some confusion with one of the commissions, and I want to make sure then that it's recorded, that that's what needs to happen. And then they can move forward with business as usual. Also, I have been getting a lot of questions, and I know that this is kind of something that we've lightly touched on before, but street vendors, and I did reach out to our city attorney for clarification. And I don't know if maybe there's an opportunity for our city attorney to kind of just give a brief explanation on whether, I know that there is a code that we can and should be enforcing with street vendors. But it seems to be becoming a rising issue. And I know that a lot of people think, you know, oh, it's okay. They're just selling this, or they're just selling that. But we don't really know for a fact if these street vendors, first of all, are locals in our community that are going out and trying to work hard, or if they're coming in from other communities and doing the street vending. But if you could provide a little bit of clarification, I would greatly appreciate that.
Sure, I can just quickly let the council and the public know what our ordinance says and what the state law requirements are. Our ordinance does require a city permit for any sidewalk vendor that is selling or distributing their wares or goods from a cart or a non-motorized conveyance of any sort on the sidewalk or just selling them off of their person. They are required to get a city permit. However, when they get a city permit, the state law says that we are not allowed to tell sidewalk vendors where they can operate, unless there is a safety reason to prohibit them from operating in a certain location on the sidewalk. And as long as it's not in a residential area as well. So they are required to have a permit. We cannot tell them where to operate under most circumstances unless there's a safety reason. And also, the state law says that the only enforcement mechanism that cities have for violations is an administrative citation of $250. The state law also says that if the violator can show that they do not have an ability to pay, then we have to reduce that citation amount by 80%. So there are significant protections under state law that tie our hands with regulating sidewalk vendors. And that is the decision that the legislatures has made.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think we needed to have some clarification on that. And then I had another question. When do we plan on opening up City Hall to be able to conduct business as usual? And...
So that's coming up. My plan, if I can get the staff report finished, would be on the next, the April 20th, is the next one. That's my goal. That's my, I'm trying to write this weekend and, or this week and get it off to the review team, because everybody has to go through all the reviews. If that goes through, then there's a couple different ways we can go. Because this one, it's going to be talking about the lobby remodel, which is something we need to do for COVID, which hopefully is going to go away. I heard the governor say we might be able to go to whatever that free is in June. But we do need to work on the lobby as it stands now from a safety security issue. So that's what that was, it's getting bigger. We have had, just like Mr. Gonzalez said, we've had issues with pricing. It's just gone up substantially. So our facilities team has been looking at how we can do it in the most cost-effective way, but allow for that security. So I do have some estimates. They're not final numbers. That'll come later if you guys all approve it. The other one is, part of that is also looking at how can we extend hours of City Hall? And it's, I'll be blunt right now. It's very honest to be longer hours when we have a reduction in staff at this level. The other one, talking with Dean, is also trying to open right now. We don't have the munis up and functioning at this moment. So even if we could open tomorrow, let's say, open the doors, there's no one at the treasury, because we're still trying to get that next module up and running. So I would say if we go, if I'm able to get it all done, get it on the agenda for April 20th, and you say, go ahead and, you know, start the remodel, it's still about two months out. And, well, the third question is Christie did say there's another possibility to use CDBG care funding that we received, my glasses keep fogging up, to pay for that. But the problem is then we have to go out and use the bacon David Davis wages. And so that would be a different process we'd have to go out and do if we're going to use CDBG funds. So that could push it out a little bit farther. My goal is, though, to try and get it done as quickly as possible so that when everything is open, we can have that ready, ready for the people to come in and do it, use the windows.
Okay, so, and thank you for that, Mr. Troup. I, I'll say that I, I don't know that I'm for us waiting to do a lobby remodel to open up City Hall again, because I think that City Hall has been closed for so long. And I think that the public wants, there are certain portions, especially of the public business and stuff like that, that really, and not to say that our residential isn't, but that need to come in and want the feeling of being able to come in and conduct business in City Hall. With that being said, maybe we need to think of alternative ways to get this place open. So whether it be maybe our utilities and stuff like that can still be handled via phone or online, especially because the whole munis thing is still happening. But people should still be able to come to the counter and do other stuff. Maybe one or two activities can still be done so that it lessens the impact of people coming, needing to come into City Hall. But we're still addressing business. To wait, I think, until the lobby is remodeled, that could take longer than 30 or 60 days. And I realize that once we go into a remodel, yes, then we got to potentially shut down City Hall, because then we're going into a remodel. But I don't know if that needs to be a council request where I get the majority to say when that report comes back, like you're saying, on April 20th? That then the council decides at that time, do we open up City Hall? And maybe staff brings a recommendation on how we can at least halfway open up City Hall.
Okay, you are correct too on when we do it, because the current counters are just basically the cubicle materials. And that would be a hard wall, so they would have to physically be removed. So that's where we would have to shut down the lobby, because there wouldn't be any counters at that point.
Yeah, when we go to renovation, when we go into renovation.
Correct.
Right, right. But from now until then, we still have to look at the proposals that are going to come in. This council still has to agree on what they want to see. And that could potentially take longer than just 30 or 60 days. And meanwhile, we're still telling the public, sorry, we're closed. Sorry, we're closed. And I don't think that that's fair to the public. So we need to figure out some alternative ways, in my opinion. So if that takes me putting out a council request and seeing if the council is in favor, then I think that that's what I would like to do.
So your plan is to try and bring back a discussion that includes this on April 20th? And before we veer into creating this into a council discussion, we still aren't allowed to open City Hall, because we're still in the red tier. And even if we open into the orange tier, we're still not allowed to open City Hall, because offices still aren't being allowed to open even under the orange tier. So we're still at a limitation of being able to open City Hall based on the public health order. The soonest we might be able to open is June 15th, based on the governor saying everything moves out of the tier, no matter what, by June 15th, if that sticks.
Correct.
Okay.
The other one, though, sorry to interrupt, is just to get with Dean and Christie to make sure that the staffing level for the clerks that would, if we could open up tomorrow, let's say, are, do we have enough people there to put in positions along the counters to do that? Because they are all working still on trying to get the munis piece up and running. So I don't know. I'd have to verify with Dean.
So I think that what we need to hear from you tonight is you're definitely going to make every effort to put all of this on the agenda on the 20th, or that you can't. And we need to make this a separate discussion item and a request from Councilmember Cordova.
So the, yeah, so my goal is to get it done for next week. It'll have the remodel, and it'll have any potential ideas we can suggest for staying open later, one day a week or all week, or whatever it might be.
But she's also asking, what are the alternatives? If we're allowed to reopen sooner, what that looks like if we haven't done the remodel and munis is still in flux?
And I can add that to it. I'll just have to get with the finance. Because the building section, planning, that wouldn't be a problem for them. They can move right into it. It's just the utility treasury side that would still have some issues, given that they haven't been able to get the munis completely done yet. It's closer, but it's just not done yet.
So for clarity, do we need to make it a council request to add that to your potential report?
I'm already working on that, so I don't, I don't need that.
Does that satisfy your request?
And thank you, Mayor Osborne, for the clarification. Because if it doesn't happen until June, then that gives us enough time to at least look at it right now in April, determine what is going to happen with this lobby, see if we have the funding to make the changes that need to be made, and then start working on that, just so that there's an expectation from the public that we're moving. Because if we wait until June 15th and nothing's done, and then we tell the public, oh, sorry, we're not going to open, because we're going to renovate the lobby now, I just think that that's, we have time. I know we don't have time. We have limited resources and people and time. But let's just kind of try to be a little proactive, because I think people are getting antsy, and they want to be able to come in and conduct business in their City Hall.
Well, I want to see them. I'll fill the room up again, too.
And then the last thing that I have before we, sorry.
No, no, you're eating up time. This is good, because otherwise, we haven't made it to nine o'clock.
All right, okay. The next thing is, City Manager, when will we know or have a list of the proposed projects or list of needs that we'll be able to fill with the government stimulus that we're going to be getting in the next couple of years?
If not by Friday, it would be very early next week. I'm finalizing with the staff right now to make sure. Some, I've had some other ideas come in. So I need to get some of the costs in there. I have costs for most everything. Again, they're all estimated at this point. But we have a substantial number of projects in there. If I was to go through, I'd say, wow, those are all viable. There's not a, hey, I really want to get a Lamborghini for the police. No, it is all necessary items. Some of them we might be able to fit in the operational budget. But I was telling staff, go ahead and put it in there so the council can see, the public can see, that, you know, there's needs in most areas. So if not by the end of this week, if I can finalize those numbers, then it would be Monday, Tuesday of next week.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
And then if I, to take that one more, is once you get it from me, if you can send me things that you don't see on it, you go, oh, I want to put that on there, with what, like a title, and then a brief description of what it is. If you have a number you want to, you know, I want to put aside, X. If you have a number you want to, you know, "I want to put aside X amount for this or for something else," just let me have that because I want to add that to our public survey. So it won't, I won't say it's from council, it's just going to be one long list, basically, broken up in public works, you know, community or infrastructure in different categories, but it'll all be in there for everyone to look at in the public and then they can start doing their rankings. If we had 50 different projects, they'll have a 1 to 50 to rank on what they want to see.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that and I know it's going to kind of feel like Christmas. And then when we can't fulfill all the dreams and wishes, I know it's going to be a little heart wrenching, but at least we're blessed to have some money and hopefully take care of some of the needs of our community and especially some of the needs of our departments and divisions that so badly need the money for them to be able to, you know, do the jobs that they need to do. So on behalf of our residents, so thank you.
You want to give her any more of your time, Councilmember Vega? All righty. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
All righty. Councilmember Mall.
I don't have much to report. Definitely been pretty active, but something I did want to bring up, I was on a League of California Cities Zoom with our Congressman Salud Carvajal, talking about the American Rescue Plan and how to start thinking about those things. And in addition to that, some people be a little concerned, but the, there used to be something everyone remembers earmarks. They're not calling it earmarks anymore. They're calling it something more fancy and more polished. But he did suggest that cities, and I'm looking into it more and I'll share information as I figure it out, but coming up with constructive ideas that might fit within the parameters that would allow us to access additional funds. So again, no guarantees, it's just a discussion at this point, but I found that very interesting and try to bring more information next time.
All right. Let's see. I have a list of meetings that I have attended. So there's the transmission of area for Northern California that represents our electrical transmission lines that I attended. Our Northern California Power Agency has had multiple meetings, both the regular meetings and the legislative and regulatory. We've been meeting with each of our state representatives and federal representatives regarding issues and concerns that are before them and discussing and being advocates for some of the different funding sources and acts before both the state and national decision makers. Also attended Santa Barbara County area government meetings. This is where much of the discussion for, say, the Measure A funds or the different RENA numbers, like we had the presentation last time, are discussed. So it's important for us to have representation there. I also attended the airport, the air pollution control district meeting. And the Santa Barbara City Selection Committee meeting was called this past month in order to make recommendations for the governor's appointment to the Coastal Commission. And the ongoing Santa Barbara County COVID-19 legislative briefings, which is where I predominantly, along with our city manager and some of the staff, hear updates as to if we're moving towards the orange tier or not, what impacts are happening for that? If vaccines are becoming available and how soon they'll be available, kind of gives us some insight so that we can prepare for and work in partnership on those. We weren't on the agenda, but I did participate in and watch the local area formation committee meeting, our LAFCO. And I also represented our community in the ribbon cutting for the Lompoc Community Track Public Access and embarrassingly ran my 100 meters. I don't know where you were, Victor, because, come on, we said we were going to run this and you weren't there. But I did run at 8:00 AM and so I welcome the community to check that out. Each week we will get an update from our partners at LVCHO and the school district as to what our hours for this week are. I know that Parks and Rec have posted them and the city web's social media page has shared them as well. So until we sort of get a routine and better understand what sports looks like at the high schools and what access we're going to have, you'll kind of see a fluctuation. They're similar, there's some early morning hours and there's some evening hours, but they aren't consistent every day. So please check the website, but please use it. It is free and it is a great surface. I will say for this 54-year-old, my knees did not hurt when I ran my 100 meters. So I encourage everybody to get out and use the track. It is amazing. I have no council requests and tried to drag this out, but we're within 15 minutes of 9:00. As our handbook says, we have to wait to add closed session items for discussion till after that. But in checking with our city attorney, since we are so close to that window, I can ask for a vote to waive that 9:00 PM. And if someone would like to make the motion to waive the wait till 9:00 PM.
Don't let Gilda talk again.
We're going to waive, waive. We're going to do the waive until 9:00 PM. No, we're going to waive the ability to have to, or the requirement to have to wait until 9:00 PM before we can start our closed session. And if we do that, we can get started ahorita, right now.
Let her talk again.
And are you, I'm sure you're going to second that because you would like.
Did he second?
You were going to second it? Awesome. Okay, so we have a motion to waive the 9:00 PM requirement to move to the last minute agenda item add. We have a second from Councilmember Vega.
Because it was waive, wait, waive.
W-A-I-V-E.
Thank you.
To put aside that requirement for this item because we're within 15 minutes of it. All right, so I have a motion. Was that your second for understanding it? Because all you asked was clarification. You didn't give me a second. All righty. So we have a motion, a second. Do we need any clarification on that? All right. Did I, did I get enough clarity for you?
And public comment too.
Oh, yeah, we need to do that, but I need to vote on this first. So let's vote to waive the 9:00 PM. That passes 5-0. Before we go into closed session, I welcome the community to call and comment. Public comment on our closed session item that was added is risk of litigation. I do not remember the government code. And the number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your television, PC, or radio if you're in the room. You are welcome to step forward for your three minutes to speak on the issue if you Seeing no one call in and/or step forward to speak on closed session item, we will close public comment and we will adjourn to closed session and return as soon as we're completed, given I don't have an estimate of how long it will take us to.